... thirty first, twenty seventeen at six thirty. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. So obviously, this special meeting has a lot to do with the actions that the town of Winchton made last week. Mr. Tenzini?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I've laid out, as you requested, a bit of a decision tree to try to hopefully assist you in laying out a plan of action for yourselves. I would like to start by pointing out that the Winchton Select Board did not say no to the IMA. It's my understanding that, like you, they had some additional questions, which they referred back to the Subcommittee. They did, however, say they would take the matter to their fall town meeting. So it seems to me that the very first question that the Board wants to discuss is whether or not it wishes to continue to work on the agreement with Winchton. And if the answer that is no, then you should discuss a long-term solution for the community. If the answer is yes, then you can discuss, assuming for a moment that that is successful, what would be an entry point for Mr. Hickey and then develop a longer-range plan, bearing in mind the need for a Plan B as well, because you could get to November or September and find out that despite everybody's best efforts, the fall town meeting in Winchton says no, even though the Boards may have said. So that's kind of why I laid out the memo that I did in what I think is a step-by-step logical method. But once you've gone through that process, then you know how long you need someone and you can then talk about how to get that done and begin to discuss names. At least, that's the suggestion that I've laid out for you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tenzini. So obviously, step one is to identify if we want to, you know, wait for Winchton's special town meeting come November. We'll move on to a long-term plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
In regards to that plan, as lucrative as it was, I believe currently right now, after watching the meeting with the Winchton Board of Selectmen and to watch the selectmen kind of recant their footing on the position, it leads me to believe that this won't be a viable option come up in the fall. So I feel that if we delay this progress for the next three months, you know, or next two months if they hold a special town meeting, we're just delaying the problem. It may pass, but I don't think we're willing to take that risk anymore. And I think, I assume that many of you feel the same way about that as well. We don't want to be in this position any longer than we have to.
Fantastic. Anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of think that, you know, we shouldn't necessarily close the door. I mean, the DOR was in favor of that in collaboration. Yes, we could see the meeting and what the comments were at the meeting. You know, however, at a town meeting, you're not going to have just a one-sided opinion. You're going to have people from both sides of the opinion. So, you know, while I don't know if they'll vote for it or not at their town meeting, I just still feel that if the deal can be worked out, that's what's best for Templeton. So, I mean, I...
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not sure that we should just close the door.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to agree with Doug on all of those statements.
Okay.
I can't hear Julie.
She said she agreed with Doug.
I agree with Doug a hundred percent on those statements. It's unfortunate that the town of Winchton wants to wait and send us to their town fall meeting. I think that we should request that they not wait that long. But that's my opinion. If they need to have a, you know, if they need to have a special town meeting, then they should have it now. If they're concerned and they want to hear from their voters and they, whatnot, they should probably have it now. They shouldn't delay it, in my opinion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So although I do agree that Templeton currently right now would have benefited from this deal, and I believe maybe somewhere down the road, we would have been, we can benefit from this deal. I think that maybe this is an option that we could pursue in maybe a year or two years' time if things work out in that way again. However, this isn't like building a school for Winchton, where they would be, the people for it would come out in droves and vote for it versus the opposition who would be strongly opposed to it. The people that are strongly opposed to this deal, I feel, in Winchton will come out in much greater support than those who are for the deal, because there is no real benefit that is apparent to the public of Winchton. So therefore, if support were to be gathered for this vote at town meeting, I think it would be, you would get much more opposition of the deal public or gathered at this meeting. And that's my fear, is that when we delay this, although it is hugely beneficial to both communities, I don't think it's very apparent by the reaction at that meeting in Winchton. So that's my fear, is that the opposition comes out in larger numbers than those that would be in for it or are very neutral to the idea.
And that typically is what happens at most annual or special town meetings.
Where we saw in Templeton for the school, you know, you saw that people that were for the school really came out and voiced their opinions versus the opposition of the deal. And it was much more representative of the body.
Understood.
But what we don't know at this point is, because the Subcommittee hasn't met since the votes were taken. So, does the Subcommittee have plans to do any public relations within Winchton? I mean, are they going to, you know, educate the public on what the benefit for them is, as well as the benefit for us? Again, we don't know that, because the Subcommittee hasn't met. We don't know, the Subcommittee may have talked to people between now and then and may have, you know, other, you know, information that may not be apparent at this point.
Okay.
I tend to, let me see if I can gather my thoughts for a minute. I too watched the meeting. And I had varying, you know me, I'm emotional, varying emotions. But I think that it's not something that we should not pursue. Just like any Board of Selectmen meeting that you can come to, you, when the going gets tough, you either come out and say no or you come out and say yes, as we've witnessed through the budget season. And I think that, I feel like when I was watching their meeting, they just had a lot of questions and they felt that it was being rushed. And I think that as a Board, we too listen to our constituents. And, you know, I think that there is benefit to both communities. And they feel like, you know, just like anyone, if you said, you know, well, we're gonna... I think to some degree, they were jumping ahead a little bit. It's an intermunicipal agreement. It doesn't say that we're going to merge departments. It doesn't say, you know, but again, they have a charter. And there was one person who read that she felt that it needed to go to town meeting, according to their legal counsel. It does not, but they are doing, you know, the will of the people. And I think that without meeting with the Subcommittee to know exactly what all the questions are, I've gotten some negative feedback and I've gotten some positive feedback. So, I mean, really to think otherwise and to, I don't like to assume about what will happen at a town meeting. A lot of times, you do not have to gather the no vote. You usually have to gather the yes vote. But I think it's, you know, incumbent upon us as well to, you know, if, to put more out there. You can put a, you know, a copy of the draft agreement online. And I think some of their questions were good questions. And they were questions that were asked as a Subcommittee. And perhaps the language, I always say in a contract, words really do matter. Commas matter in a contract where you put that. In that if we, if they just want to cinch up some language, and of course, they feel like they're losing, they have an amazing town administrator, from what I've seen, who has brought them out of a very, what could be considered a dire situation. And, you know, yeah, I understand that. But I would like to see us, you know, not just say, oh, we're done. I think their Subcommittee from, you know, the emails that we got in the beginning, that they do want to come out and, and they do want to discuss. And maybe they're just questions and there are logical answers to them and we only have a couple of things to worry about. So I would like to see us continue with that discussion. And again, the DOR seems to be in favor of that and had said that they would help us and help that community bring things together, personnel policies, financial, there's a lot of other things that, you know, Mr. Blake said that could be done. What those are, I don't know exactly, because he didn't specify exactly. Because it's hard to know, you know, what's needed until we actually get closer to that. But I think that it is incumbent upon Winchton and upon Templeton to say what the benefits are. Just like if we were building a new school, like we were, you have to, you have to give all the information. So, I just don't think that a Select Board meeting is always representative of what everybody thinks, because we're, they got a lot of emails. I know I got a lot of emails. But again, if I could split it down the middle, they were plus and minus. And people were also sending me stuff about what residents were saying in Winchton too. And I have a couple of people that, in Winchton, they were not against it. So, it's hard to say what would happen, but I would like to continue.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything to add?
Can we, can we put a, so if we look at the timeline of this, their fall town meeting comes sometime in November, correct?
That's about, yes.
So we have August, September, October, November.
Right. And then even if they vote on it in November, it's probably not going to kick off probably till sometime in January, I would assume. And I hate to assume.
That would be, yeah, if they, if they accepted it and then we would have to. So we're looking at, what, five, six months?
Six months, at least, in a minimum, without representation.
And that puts us in the position to find a new interim town administrator, right?
I think first, we have to decide if we want to pursue the agreement, because then there are, we can skip to a different page to see what our other options are for that.
Well, I mean...
Well, that's what, we need to decide whether we're going with a short-term or the long-term plan, right? That was...
It's about the size. Are we going to, are we going to hold on and wait for Winchton and their special town meeting in November to see what their, what their people are going to vote for?
Can we ask Winchton to have their special town meeting earlier than November? Is that a possibility, Mr. Carter?
Well, you can, but the Subcommittee hasn't even met to talk about what the questions are. So there's three weeks, at best. It has to come back to the two Select Boards. That's your last meeting in August, at best. Then if they decide to hold a special, they're going to have to weigh out the pluses and minuses of that. And there's political risks to that. Then it needs probably 20 days to be posted, so you're at the end of September, most likely, at best. And you can't just look through this at the prism of, okay, we'll figure out how to get to there. You need to, that's Plan A, that's, that's fine. What's Plan B if they say no?
Right.
And you've been here. You did it. You did it just a month ago. You had an opportunity to parallel both the Winchton and some other things. And you chose to wait. And I understand why you chose to wait.
Right.
I'm not sure that's something you want to necessarily repeat a second time.
Right.
But they have discussed the possibility, and in fact, have asked DOR, or they have a call into DOR to see if DOR would pick up any costs associated with that.
Okay.
And I think we built that in at some point in the decision paper for you.
I would like to make a motion to continue to work on the agreement with Winchton.
Okay, I have a motion to work on the agreement with Winchton. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion concerning that at this point with this, working with Winchton? Yes, ma'am?
What did you plan on for this fiscal year, when you did your budget?
What do we plan on, as far as budgetary response? For this year, we budgeted for $110,000 for the TA position.
I would think we should continue with that plan simultaneously, pursuing this other one, knowing that it could pick up anytime.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? I see none. Cameron?
No.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote no as well. Alright, passed. Three to two. Okay, now with that, with that motion, working with the IMA, with Winchton, keeping that, keeping that process alive. You know, simultaneously, we should be still looking at options to maintain, you know, that office in a professional manner. Either, you know, reopening, you know, advertisement, potentially. You know, and I hate to say the words, another interim town administrator, because I really, that's not the right way, course of action at this point, after three years. I think the townspeople deserve better and more than that. But that's just John's opinion. But any other thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, we certainly need to have a full-time administrator. But if we go out and get somebody who is a town administrator, not an interim, and then the agreement with Winchton pans out, now we're changing them again. So they were an interim.
Yes, Mr. Tenzini?
I, I think that you might want to recast the discussion, because whatever you do, I really don't think you want to call the person an interim any longer. You've had three and a half years at this point. And if you are going to continue to work with Winchton, what you, if, if you follow, you know, the page four here, five, whatever the heck it's numbered at this point, you're really looking at a part-timer. Because if you advertise for a full-time person with Winchton going on in the background, your application pool is going to be not as robust as you would like. Because they're going to know this is going on in the background. And they're not going to want to invest their time, their money, and the risk of exposure. At least, that's my sense of it, having been in a few applicants from that side of things.
So you do think there would be an applicant pool interested in a part-time town administrator?
Well, I mean, if the, if the hope is that Winchton's going to work, then that's really the only applicant pool you can go after.
Can I give some thoughts on the memorandum? So reopening the search, we've done this three times and they've all, they've all failed. As far as I thought about targeted recruitment, and my concern with that is that people who may have submitted their applications after the fact is all well and good, but they were after the fact and they were given to, you know, Mr. Kobayashi and not to the town of Templeton, and that we should still, I believe that that's opening us up to risk. So if I turned my application in late and then some, you know, decided later, oh, hey, you know, can I apply? What about all the other people? So we would still have to go out for a full-targeted search. That's my opinion. And then as far as, well, that's those two things. We could pursue recruitment of another seasoned administrator. We have, you know, the Winchton thing going on in the background. We've had, you know, people here two and a half years and one year respectfully. And then the part-time administrator with a management intern, which to me sounded like the best approach, but, you know, that's me. I just, with three failed attempts to reopen the search at this time of year is just, to me, not a good idea. And again, targeted recruitment, I think that's going to open us up to more harm than it's worth. And then, I don't know, I've had several, a week to think about this. And we have a person, we have a person in place already who did our budget last year and who has gone through a lot with the town of Templeton and is, I believe, with the help of all the employees, has righted the Titanic for maybe not necessarily, maybe not all smooth sailing, but I, I would like to ask Carter to stay, if that's an option for Carter. That we have, again, the budget's there. He is, he, employees don't want to be subjected to more uncertainty. And as a Board, yes, we have a job to do. And we could be here every single week doing stuff. But who's going to call who and who's gonna, I just, I don't feel like I can take that on appropriately.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I am going to speak out against extending Mr. Carter's contract, because this can't become a fallback every time this happens. And I, this is the first time it's happened to me. And I know this may be several times it has happened to this Board in particular. But we cannot keep looking towards Carter for extension. We can't have this catch-all. We really need to pony up here, figure our stuff out, and really drive for a new town administrator, or we need to go for this Winchton deal. And if that requires us to suck it up for a month and act as the town administrator or to find somebody to fill that gap, that's what, that's what needs to happen. But we cannot continue to do that, which is extend our, keep extending his contract. Because if this back fails one more time, are we going to say, oh, Carter, can we extend your contract? We can't allow that to happen. We really need to hold our ground here and we need to get this done. And we need to solve this issue once and for all.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't, I don't.
I'm wondering if we should try to retain a management service temporarily while we're waiting on the Winchton situation. Is that feasible?
Municipal management service?
I think that was in here.
There are some out there, they are extremely expensive, on the order of ninety to a hundred dollars an hour.
It is highly likely that the contracts would outstrip our current budget resources.
Yeah, these are about ninety to a hundred dollars an hour.
So, I mean, my opinion is if we leave the position vacant and the Board assumes that responsibility, then it's the Board that assumes that responsibility. It's not individuals, it's not you doing finance, it's not you doing inspectional services, it's not you doing this. It's the Board. We would meet four days a week. If a department head has an issue that they need resolved, they'll come to that meeting. If the Board is not willing to meet four days a week and work as a five-member group with the department heads, then it's a disaster and it won't get a vote, me.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Because they're, the Board does not have individual authority. We are a Board, and the Board needs to make decisions.
I understand, we are, we are a Board, we are the entity. Once again, we knew coming into this deal that it was not going to be a wham-bam job. We knew this wasn't going to be a hundred percent, and we knew there was risk involved. Carter had expressed that he was not up for renewal of a contract, that he was not going to continue. He had his going-away party, if you will, last week. We knew this going into that. And I don't, I don't know if you guys had banked on the idea that this wasn't a possibility. But it's a reality now, and I think we really need to start owning that fact, that this is what happened. So if we have to meet four times a week, that is what we are elected in our capacity to do? That is, that is what we had come here to do?
I can't. It's not, you know, it's not, it's not normal. We've been in a state of influx, and I do not consider Carter a stopgap. It's unfortunate that as a Board, you know, of course, I was excited about the prospect of Winchton and that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not just throwing this out there, and I don't like to use that word, but I believe for me that we've, I've come a long way with Carter and that I believe that he has come a long way with the employees and that they trust him and that they can, with him, they can get the job done. And even if it's not a 30-day gap for us to meet four days a week, if you look at the memorandum, it's already, like, we just went through that process. It's possibly the end of September. That's all of August, that's all of September, that's... I have to be honest, and I love my community, but I would be having a heart attack by the time the end of September came. I have a family, I have a job, I do a lot of research, just like all of you do in the background, on everything. Who's going to do the, you know, weekly memos? Who's, oh my gosh, I'm having a heart attack just thinking about it. So we have a person at the helm. And I think it's, you know, unless you're all opposed to not asking, and that's different, I would, you know, like to have, you know, I feel, I'm sorry, Carter, you know, have that conversation. I just don't know what else is feasible. And if we're going to continue, which we said, with Winchton trying to, you know, have somebody come on, on a part-time basis, and this, you know, we have, we have Carter here already, who knows where we've been? We have auditors coming in in less than two weeks, and that's already been set in motion. We have fiscal pop with Collins. We have so many things, like, in the air that, how would a new person do that and then still know that Winchton's in the, in the background? I think that he's an amazing, you know, he's done a great job, so.
I agree with you, Diane, but I think that with auditors coming in, it has nothing to do with a TA. If we have people in place, in positions, in town, that know their job and are strong at their jobs, they're okay. They know the auditors are coming in, they've got this. You know, what is the TA going to do to assist that person when the auditor comes in? Basically. Do you know what I mean?
Maybe the people who work here should answer that. I worked here for three months in the finance office, you know, helping to right the ship. And they asked him a lot of questions. I had to, every day. You can't, there's not a, it's not that they don't know their job. I was like, oh my God, what do I do? Oh, this comes up, oh, what do I do about that? I don't think there was any day that I came in here that I didn't have to come to Kelly or Carter. And yes, I don't really know that part, I did do a good job. But, you know, I'm just saying, you know, they, there's, I, I hear them, Carter had weekly meetings with them to, okay, what's on this, you know, what's on the schedule for this week? And I mean, yeah, they're all amazing at what they do, but they still, they still need someone here that they, one person that they can talk to. You know, because he sees the whole ship or the whole organization and not just one miniscule, like, oh, what's going on at COA? Oh, what's going on the highway? He has to look at the whole picture, what any manager would do.
Yes, Carter?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I always get uncomfortable when the decisions are talked about on the basis of a person. I encourage you to think about the process and then if there's a box in that process and the timeline, then you can talk about the name for that. But respectfully, you're doing it again. The earliest you're going to have an answer from Winchton is September. If that fails, you have a minimum six-month process ahead of you. So if that's the Board's decision... So if that's the board's decision, uh, to meet frequently, uh, and to become more hands-off and make those different kinds of, of decisions, I think that you need to think that that window could be two months, that window could be eight months. Because you don't want to be here in two months and then say, what are we going to do now? Which is why I've, I've encouraged you throughout this memo, um, to think about Plan A and Plan B, so that you have some continuum here.
I think you're right.
I hope I didn't give the wrong impression in my earlier statement. I don't, I mean, the board managing it for a month is okay. We could probably do that, but for three months, six months, eight months, it's an absurd idea. It's just not doable.
Okay, as the board voted to, uh, to maintain this Plan A, to maintain this course with Winchton, and obviously see what Winchton has to offer as far as what their people are going to say, uh, again, we can, I hate assumptions as well as everybody else, and I'm not going to assume anything. Um, and I get the same emails and text messages and phone calls I think that the rest of the board receives as well with, uh, pros and oppositions. So, uh, I personally don't know how Winchton's going to fare, fare on this. I don't know. I'm not in the capability or the situation to put, uh, put all the eggs in one basket. Um, so we have to come up with a simultaneous plan, uh, to either hire a part-time person, uh, with skill sets, uh, or I wouldn't say do a search, but at least another advertiser potentially, um, to see what type of, uh, to see what other opportunities that we can get from other individuals that are applying, that can't apply.
Consider retaining a management service part-time.
We could consider that.
It's quicker.
It is.
Than going back out into this pool, your committee submitted names, some of which were not even brought in front of us, unfortunately, for whatever the reasons were. But to go back out there and go through that entire process again, to me, is a waste of all of our time.
Well, uh, one of the good positive notes is that the position, I believe, is, was still posted till filled, correct, Carter?
It was not, that advice was not, um, approved.
Okay.
Right, it wasn't.
It was with a fixed date.
What's that?
It was with a fixed date.
It was, okay.
Now, that said, there is no legal, you do not have a charter.
Right.
Um, you do not have a bylaw which specifies the method of filling, uh, the position.
Right.
So this body can create that out of, out of whole cloth on its own.
Okay.
Yeah, but we could also look, um, as one of the options we're outlining, is we could potentially, rather than looking for a full hundred percent seasoned town administrator, we could potentially look for a, um, you know, younger person with management and/or financial experience, and hopefully find, you know, someone such as Carter or Mr. Hickey that might be, um, willing to do some mentoring with this person.
Mm-hmm.
So not really going out for a full search, but if we did advertise, we wouldn't necessarily have to advertise for, you know, the top of the heap again.
So let me get this right. You want to advertise for a part-time town administrator? Or a full-time town administrator in conjunction with working out, because obviously we just voted on, um, the board just voted on maintaining its course of action with Winchton.
Mm-hmm.
So simultaneously, are you saying that you want to re-advertise for a part-time or full-time TA?
I think a part-time.
Part-time TA?
It doesn't make sense to bring in somebody that's expecting full-time that may or may not be. But that part-time administrator might not necessarily have to be a thirty-year veteran in municipal government.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
So we go out, we advertise this position. Do we disclose that we are probably going to cancel his position in six months to three months? Because I know if I was in the job pool and I was going for a contract position, some people are on the market for that, absolutely, where they, they don't want a long, long contract, you know, temp workers and such. But I think you're going to significantly hamper your candidate pool when they come to terms with, my job's going to be canceled in six months, three months, maybe two months, if everything moves really quick. So it, it almost creates that instability when you're going out for these applicants, and I, it, it's tough to really, I mean, we could attempt it, but I don't think you're going to get nearly the results you want.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't know anybody that's going to leave their current job who could fill that position for whatever the amount of money is, because they must be making a substantial amount of money already to be filling those shoes, most likely in the private sector. And then knowing that they're just going to get chopped, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for me. There's no, it's not logical in my head, but there may be somebody out there that would want to do that.
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, when you're advertising for a part-time, you know, you, we'd certainly stipulate that it's a part-time with a potential contract term of, you know, three months, six months. I mean, option one here is saying ten months.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, so then when we go and we say it's got the three months, six months, and time's coming up for the, the town meeting, and he's already searching for another job, he or she, I should say, searching for another job, they get an offer, Winchton doesn't go through the deal, and then we're back in the same situation we're in now. That's, that's another potential risk we could face?
That's a potential risk, yep.
There's a lot of risk out there. Yes.
What if it, what if you decide this person has the potential to, to fill those shoes, Winchton doesn't come through? And you decide you want to hang on to this person? There's a flip side of the coin.
For, for lack of a better term, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, uh, you're kind of in bed with both parties. And when you do that, things get really muddy, really dangerous, and so when Winchton says that, you know, we have a really good candidate, this is what we're going to do, and they start to build their deal around us, because I, if I have it correct, um, you know, we have a window of time where I think it's only till February is really like the last we can do this deal, and if we push past that time, you know, their budgets are already closed. So if we push past that, we have to wait the full year to go back with this deal. That's, that's the extreme utmost. And at the short end, uh, say we're coming into, I don't know, October, October, we're all set, ready to go. We have our part-time guy, and they're ready to go, and we're ready to sign the contract, and we find out that this guy's really good. We're at that point where we're saying, okay, Winchton doesn't feel comfortable, because we're now looking at this guy, we screwed up their plans, they, they go their way. So it's kind of like, you, you don't know long sight down the road, or they don't, as their party, and we don't know that. And that's not a very good way to conduct any sort of business, in my opinion. I think you should really know what your kind of, what your game plan is long-term. You, you shouldn't play both sides.
Yes.
If you're revoked to pursue that.
Yes.
Yes, they did.
If you're revoked, that is your long-term.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's what I, I, I didn't, I voted no on that, just to, for the record, uh, because obviously, I'm going to, I, from what I, I read the IM, that, I meant the agreement, and I thought it was well-written, the verbiage was well, the language was perfect. But if, you know, if you look at it in this perspective of Winchton, other than maybe some, you know, thirty-B, some forty-B stuff, uh, you know, some, some of the, uh, you know, purchasing authority stuff, maybe some of that could have been, but if you look at the bigger picture as far as the, what Winchton was going to receive, which was a difference of about a savings of seventy thousand dollars. Now, that was, if you look at the but, at the IM, at the agreement, it was seventy thousand dollars. For a town as, as big as Winchton, with their industrial market, their, their growth, uh, their budget, which is almost double of ours, um, and just so you know, ours is about fifty million dollars a year, so you can figure out Winchton is on your own, uh, seventy thousand dollars is really not a lot of money from the save. That's, I mean, looking at big scale of things, big picture things. But again, I, I, I think at the end of the day, I, I don't want to put all the eggs in one basket. I, I mean, it's up to the board, uh, to make a determination, which they've already did. They want to continue the match with Winchton, and I, and I respect that. Um, but we need to, we need to, that's Plan A. Okay, that's great. Plan B, what's the immediate fix between now and the next nine months or ten months? Or the next three months, or whatever it's going to be, we need to put somebody in that seat. Diane, uh, great opportunity to, to maintain the, the interim, uh, town administrator, um, obviously with, with his consent, um, which is a, a good stopgap for now. It's a stopgap. But what's going to happen, you know, if Winchton comes back and the people, you know, stack the deck of all the noes, uh, and it's voted down? Now we're right back in the situation we are, and we just lost another eight, nine, ten months. Yes.
Oh, and you could work into your wording of the job that, um, it includes possible transition into the, you know, Winchton agreement.
Wha- what's that? I'm sorry.
Could be part-time position.
I wouldn't be able to do that. I mean, because obviously, because Winchton has a charter and the, and the other.
No, 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 no.
We're talking about our hire.
Oh, the part-time person?
Right, that you advertise.
Yeah, I don't know if that's.
We don't have the time. I don't think we have the time.
Well, we have.
We have to fill something.
To go reopen a search.
I wouldn't say a search. I would say, I hate, I hate to use the word search as well, because we, you know, search committees are search committees, they're, they're professional organizations like Collins that they headhunt and they, and they do searches. I mean, the option that we have here to make, uh, i- is to potentially re-advertise again. Uh, but again, the process would, for a part-time, and I understand your perspective as far as the pool you're going to get, uh, knowing the fact that, you know, your job could be cut short as a contractual obligated job, and I understand your perspective too, Doug.
No.
Uh, but at the end of the day, you know, uh, the seat has to be filled, somebody has to be, at least, at least have one hand on the wheel, if that's the Board of Selectmen until Winchton, you know, does their vote, uh, or, yeah, I, I don't know, we're, we're, we have to make decisions here. And, uh, and the first decision was made, is to stay the course with Winchton, and I respect that. So what's, what's, what's B? Is it, what's B? What's tomorrow? What do we do tomorrow?
No, I would be in favor of, you know, having, you know, the honest discussion with, uh, Carter and seeing, you know, what his feeling is, so.
That's the question. Well, I would like to.
I mean, I, I'd make that motion.
Okay, you're, are you making a motion, Doug, for what?
We would have to go into an executive session.
To have a discussion with Carter, to see if he would be interested.
We have to go into an executive session to do that.
Okay, I, I.
I would agree with Diane, we should go into an executive session.
We have to go into an executive session to do that.
Okay.
So we need the, I don't know which the, you have the wording to do that. We can't just.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so.
The motion would be to go into, um, executive session under Master and O'Lauch, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one dash two, uh, to conduct, um, negotiations, uh, with non-union personnel to whip the town administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
And we would be coming back out into session.
Potentially for a vote.
Potentially for a vote.
Okay, motion, second. Any other discussion? I see none. Cam?
Abstain.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay.
Okay, so I, um, make a motion to extend Mr. Ternzini's contract without term and for him to come back to the Board of Selectmen at their next regularly scheduled meeting with an advertisement for a management intern.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? I see none. Cameron?
Abstain.
Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, and a second. Diane, any other discussion? Are you talking to me?
How about I let you photograph my memo?
That'd be great. I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Uh, Cameron?
Abstain.
To closing our meeting?
Yep, abstain, okay. Julie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.